Kind of called meeting the board. Let's go through, take a look at old business first. The water leak that we chased for almost a month and a half, two months. We ended up getting company Emmy Simpson in to do leak detection, listening, and they located the leak just directly across the road from the community room. And so it has been fixed, but there's more work to be done with a new service that we ran under Main Street to 36 South Main. That was one of the shut offs that was leaking there. So that still is in the works and Ronnie Black's crew will be here to do that in the near future.
What's going on before they dug the first place down there?
Again, it's a large concrete cove. They had to patch a hole in the top of it.
Oh, okay. So that's what's still on the...
Yeah, they'll have to concrete that. So that's why it's...
I just wonder why it's all still...
Yeah. So thankfully, and I hope our public records reflect it, we're back to...
Yeah, but we have a person in town that has $114,000, $114,000 usage. So I went out and tried and used my belt clip, but I can't get it to record. Someone called tomorrow to see if they could tell me if it just happened, you know, so I can see where it was and when. But I checked to make sure somebody lived there and they said yes, and I don't know.
But our public records other than that reflect that, it's okay. That's good news.
It's a visual nightmare to drive by there.
Yeah. I want to go by there and say...
It's sad.
Where's the water leak at? You can figure out where it's at.
Okay. Also under old business, we have the resolution that Cindy Todd and Darla presented to us at the last meeting. We took it under advisement and let our council take a look at that. Your thoughts on that resolution?
So the only concern I had in looking at, and I got a chance to review the Indiana code on it, was just that it gives the authority to a third party as to who's in the district and who's not in the district and governance over the district in that respect. So that's just something that you guys as a board need to be aware that for the purpose of the district's services and things like that, that this board wouldn't have the authority over that board.
We had access to an opportunity we did, Darla and I, on a phone conference call. And we issued that concern and the suggestion was that the board be made up of two people from Marshall. So that would be two fifths of the board.
Right.
A county commissioner and...
County council.
County council.
And then the soil conservation.
So, I mean, that was the only concern I had in looking at that. And then I just wanted a chance to read the code.
Right.
I've read it now. That's still the only concern that, you know, as long as you're aware of that, then, you know, I don't have any other concerns about it.
Okay.
And, you know, the discussion we had last meeting was concerning a potential creation of a regional wastewater district. And I believe that district would include Marshall and DNR, which is the state park, at which the school system out here is also a player in this as far as being a customer. And so that's what this resolution then would address, is that formation of that district. I know that the county commissioners and county council are both familiar with it. And so at this time, that would be the only entity, the only players that it would look like. And I believe you are, I know you are correct in saying that we give that authority over that group to make those decisions.
Sure.
But with us having a really good representation, I feel more comfortable than what we were before.
Well, and that's just something you guys have to weigh as a board, you know, your thoughts on that and the good versus the bad and, you know, the benefit for the town, you know? I mean, I think certainly this town would benefit, in my opinion, from that. But my job is just to make you aware that that's an issue.
Right. And that's what we appreciate because that's what we need to make sure, that there wasn't nothing, nothing that we were missing as a town. So we have them all in it. But I'm like Kevin, I felt if we have the two people on the board, because the boards will end up, from my understanding, is wants the next project for another part of the county, then they would end up in the board with kind of increase.
But you guys as members would have to vote for that increase.
Right. There's something off his mind, but my dad suggested when I was telling him about this. Is there any way we can find another town that's similar to our town that's done something like this and asked them the pros and cons of the outcome of it to see before we...
I don't have one off the top of my head that I know of, but I'm certain it's been done before. I don't think we're recreating or creating the...
That's what he said. There should be somebody up there that would say, no, this was a total disaster. It didn't work like we thought it would and it just went the wrong way. Or, yes, this was really good things that happened and it come out of it.
Well, like, I represent the Crown Hill Regional Sanitary Sewer District in Clinton, which is where Walmart is and a lot of those. And so they created a sewer, a regional sewer district, but it's made up of five board members that govern the district and they, they're able to, you know, pass regulations and as far as what the cost of service is and things like that, and if somebody's violating certain terms and things like that. So it does give oversight, whereas right now, there's not oversight on who's doing what sewer wise, I mean, barring just licensing from the county or permission from the county. But nobody's directly overseeing that in the town limits. So, so there is that good from it too, that you have somebody regulating and overseeing what's going on with it. But I'm certain there's been other towns probably somewhere that have done this.
I mean, like you, like Bellmark, they brought Dollar General in there and they don't have sewer system.
Right.
I mean, so...
And that's probably tough to lure in commercial properties without that available because a septic system's not ideal for commercial use. So it might be a benefit...
They just have extra property and...
For your industry, you know, I mean, we have one big industry here in town. I'm sure that would be a benefit to them to have that available for them, but...
But in the 90s, it was recognized that we had a need for a wastewater treatment facility in this area. And since that time, definitely nothing has gotten better. There has not been improvements.
But I just hate the thought of all these, I should say, these people, but if you look at the cost of hooking it up, getting rid of your septic system, I mean, there could be grants to help you, but some of these people are against budget. So how do we justify telling them they have to if they don't have money? I, I, that's what, you know, I'm not against it, but I mean, just things like that that I'm thinking of it...
Well, there'll be, there'll be opportunities in public meetings for people to voice those questions and concerns and, you know, as we go through a process, if we do sign this resolution, we, we're going to have to be in partnership with an engineering firm, with the county because of the county commissioners and the county council could probably be a player in this. But we need to recognize whether or not it's worthwhile. It does add burden cost wise to every homeowner that hooks up. And with what they talked about last meeting, you know, there can be exceptions. If you just put in a brand new septic system and it's working, then you can go for an Playing the other side of the court on this, we have issues and Darla, I know, brought that to the attention of the county council when she talked to him. We certainly have issues in this area.
Right. I mean, now...
And so, you know, we have to make it a decision whether or not we think it is, it's the right time for us to move forward with this. Because it will not get cheaper as we go and there's, there is no Band-Aid that's going to fix the problem other than this.
Well, in my understanding was there's quite a bit of funding through the state as far as to help set up a district and things like that. That might be something Cindy Todd's better able to answer, the funding portion of it. I didn't research it from that angle. I was looking at the legalities and what makes the town reserves versus what the town gives up, so...
And that is what she was stated, that being that it's considered a district and it's a county-wide district, the funding's going to look at that being that this is just a phase one project. So that means that as a county, we know that there's issues, we want to move forward, but it's, it's going to have to be phased because of the money. But there's a chance of getting more grant money with it being labeled like this.
And state grant money anymore, you almost have to have it regionalized to get it. I mean, the more regionalized you are on whatever you're asking for, even if you're talking roads or bike trails or, I mean, it's just every, I've seen it from all those different angles and the more you have involved, the bigger your odds on getting awarded are. So having that as a regional district, phase one would probably help, I would assume.
And this is just a phase because, like you said, there's going to be hearings, you've got to end up and have the public speak. So the public can pretty well, if there's a majority of them, they can pretty well cancel the project, from my understanding.
Well, they have a right to voice their opinion. They have a right to take legal action if they want to take legal action, even individually. And, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, loose ends that have to be tied up before it becomes a final project. This is just the first step, expressing interest and support for it, basically.
Is there been any discussion, once the system would be up and running, how the monthly expenses or the charges would be calculated? Most places run off of how much water you use.
That's it.
So you're going to need Kathy's numbers on a monthly basis to do those charges?
Well, I think that could be a piece of it, but that hasn't been decided. That was just part of the discussion and how that, how that charging would take place. That would be part of the board's, the district board's responsibility to come up with that animal, to figure out how they're going to fill that.
Unless they do that, because I know like Chris Newcomb was talking about the DNR, like they have flow meters on their wastewater. So that way they know how much flow of wastewater that they're getting from the school and how much flow from the park itself they get. So I'm wondering if they're going to put like flow meters on it so that way they could tell where it's kind of coming from to maybe base off of that.
That's what Crown Hill does for their district because they're just wastewater. They're not water or anything else, so...
Because that's what was my concern too, because some of our customers will be out of this district. I mean, we're not going to take this all the way down to 36 because that's...
Of course.
Right. So...
That is a good question and we don't have an answer, I just...
For sure.
But there has been some limited discussion on that. Larry, you didn't, you weren't able to be part of that call this morning, but do you have other questions and concerns?
No, I understand the need, but I'm concerned about new line compared to our 81-year-old present water system that probably should be someday worked on too, thought seriously about. Our new tires have put a little more pressure on the system and I think it's reflecting that in our repairs, I'm not sure, but we do have other worries. Not worries, but obligations maybe.
So what is being asked of us is to take a look at this resolution and by signing this, it will allow the project to go ahead and move forward. The lack of Marshall's participation because we're seen as a big player in this and a big need in this, so it's almost a make or break moment whether we decide to sign or not to sign the resolution and have this possibly move forward. So I, at this time, unless there's other questions, I'd intercede motion...
I have none.
Whether we want to sign or not sign. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we do sign the proclamation.
I'll second the motion.
We can move in a second to sign the resolution approving creation and submission of regional wastewater petition. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Before we sign that and then give that, I guess that should go to Cindy?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we'll, we'll want to, do you have a copy?
I don't have a copy. We'll have to make a copy of our signed one so we have a front record.
Can you send me a copy of it too?
I'll take it.
The signed one? I, I don't know.
I mean, who, where is...
If you want me to take it, I can take it and give it to Cindy and give a copy to all of you, but I mean, it's...
That'd be perfect then, if you don't mind. That way we know.
That's fine.
That way you make sure you get your...
I see Cindy about every other day, so...
That's what I figured. Unless, thanks Kathy.
I signed it. Only... Okay, I'll just...
I don't know what resolution number, have we done any resolutions this year?
No.
Okay, so that'd be one.
One. Just over here. Last meeting, we had discussion about the truck route that was designated to come through...
Do you need this?
I need Kathy's.
He's got to sign first.
Designated to come through South Main Street. And I know we had some in-depth discussion here, but really didn't have a thorough understanding, or at least I didn't, on how that whole thing came about. I know Larry and his wife had some discussion with the commissioner. I also called the commissioner about this. It was brought up at the commissioner's meeting on Monday, yesterday, and I received a call from the commissioner that I spoke to and said they have decided to change the route. This will no longer be the truck route. We'll use one of the county roads going off of...
450.
Yeah, 450 off of 41. And that, they will address that road that kind of bring up to stuff, whatever it takes for that truck route. So, yes, that, I thought that was really good news. It's going to save our street, it's going to save the, the possible leaks that we had could also be from vibrations from those semis. We don't really know that. But it was suggested by the commissioner that we look at signage on this route. And I guess my question to you and to Nick is, how do we put signage on there? Is it with load limit? Is it no trucks, no semis, and then agricultural use? How does that work?
We can pass a ordinance like they did that regulates it, but I would recommend weight limits is probably the best approach. I mean, I think that's probably the best route to go on it, you know?
What does that do to farmers though?
Well, it would limit farmers as well. I mean, you can, if you do an ordinance, you can itemize that or opt out certain, and that's what they did for the county. They opted out agriculture and certain necessities, you know, like ambulances, you know, or whatever, or fire trucks. I mean, you can certainly do that too. I was the one that drafted ordinance for the county, so I already have that as a template if that's something we want to use for Main Street. I can tell you the county's directive's going to limit that traffic from the corner there at 450 to the town limits. So they're already not be allowed to drive on that section of the county road. So, I mean, that problem may be solved just by having that as a limit, but, because once they get to the town limits on Main Street going south, they're not allowed to drive on that section of the county road by county ordinance. So, but it wouldn't be hard to draft an ordinance, just putting a weight limit on Main Street.
Kind of along with that, North Main Street gets along with semi-traffic too. And it's a cut through from 47 to 41 South, but it also is a connection, South Main Street to some of the Amish businesses, but it also serves the local industry too. So how do we dance around all of those issues and still be fair and protect our, our interests?
You know, local industry, I'd be curious as to what the weight of their trucks that come and go from that industry would be, but, you know, as far as the south portion, I don't think the industry's probably an issue. It'd just be where do we draw a line on the north portion? Some towns will designate routes that they're fine with them driving with that weight limit. I know, for instance, Clinton has a truck route within the city of Clinton that they're allowed to go on with a certain weight limit. So I guess it kind of depend on who we're talking about. If we're talking about the industry, we could allow them on that potentially, or we could send them off a side street if there is one available that they could use. But you could limit it to one street, so then when you're having to do repairs because of the traffic level, you're not repairing every street in your town, you're just repairing the one street that they're driving on. But it'd be good to know exactly what, you know, I know agriculture's on it, I know school buses are on it, but I'm not up to date on what a school bus weighs versus what a grain truck would be hauling or, so...
Grain truck would haul close to 4,000 pounds.
Right. And I don't know what a school bus is.
It'd be a 50,000 pound difference.
Right. Or like the gas trucks or, I mean, it'd be good to know what are desired. I guess I'd need direction from you on what we're desiring to limit versus what we're wanting to allow in.
Park Seed would have palletized, so that would be heavy.
And then you could be able to get timber trucks, they're hauling logs and things like that too.
That log company goes through, it goes north on Harrah's all the time.
Right. But that's how the county's doing it, is they're limiting it by weight restriction, but then they have certain things that are opt out.
They have never put a limit on the road going north out of Marshall to 47, I know.
No, they haven't. The only thing they limited was 200, 275, 450, and 100, and then the section south of 200 toward Rockville, to Rockville town limits is what the county limited. And then they've done some things on the southern part of the county and they've done some things up by Nero's also, or Hyde Bridge Road, I think. But since I've been there, they haven't done anything on that road. And I don't think they really did a lot of that prior to me being there, so... But I guess it, the direction I would need to be is what are we desiring, desiring to limit versus what are we desiring to let in? And then, you know, if weight limit's not the best route to go, then we can go by what, what the industry is or what the business is and, you know, for instance, if you live on the road, it's hard to tell somebody that lives on the road that they can't drive down the road with their whatever truck or heck equipment, or if you have a farm on the road, you know? So there's a lot of variation there, but... So the north part of the road, I guess the question would be what do we want to limit on there? Because the county's already going to limit anything south of, once you get to town limits, you're not allowed to be on Marshall Road until you get to 450, so...
The only signage then that is a possibility is, is here for the inner South Main Street that's needed. The way I look at it, we, I, I see a lot of trucks coming from the east on 236 and make that corner to go south.
That's what I was wondering, because how are they going to know that they get to here and they get down to the end and then how are they going to get turned around?
They're not going to be able to turn around, so the signage would, yeah. And it maybe even be appropriate to have one when they're ending town limits to just advise them if there's a truck route.
Okay.
And the truck route would just make the jog there over and then go over to 41, I would assume, but...
Yeah, if you step in the office, you realize how many semis make that corner and goes south.
And that's hard on your road, and it's a brand new road.
Well, I would be very much in favor of having to put together that ordinance so that, so that we can address it sooner than later.
As far as North Main, are we looking for the intersection, like north of the intersection there and then out to 47? Is that what we're looking on, North Main? Or what would be the section of North Main we'd want to limit travel on, I guess?
Well, I think once we limit travel on North Main, it's all the way to 47, just by the fact that you...
You can't...
There was nowhere else to go.
Right. Okay. North Main intersection.
But I do, I think we've got to be aware that we have a business in town that, that we need to consider and how that consideration in that ordinance looks, I don't know.
So I guess it'd be good to hear from them on where their people that are coming to them are coming from. You know, if they're coming from the north, obviously that might be, but they could come down 41 and they come across on the highway and get to them. Or if they're coming from the east or really the south, really it's just funneling their traffic onto the highway versus being on the side roads, so...
Overbacks is another one.
Yeah, overbacks. That Future X and the Park Seed is going to go either north or south and it's hard for them to pull out and go north.
Right.
To go east or to go west.
So what the county did was they limited some sections of the roads, like, I'm trying to think if it's 450, one of the roads, there's a Amish business on it that has deliveries by semi. So they had it allowed semis from Marshall Road to where the business is, but after that it was prohibited. Or like on 100, you're allowed to come off of 41 on 100 till you get to that, the food distribution place. But then you're not allowed to go further on, I think it's 200, not 100, 200. You're not allowed to go further on 200.
That's down on the hill just around the single pass, just...
Right. So, so there's ways to do that too. So it just kind of funnels the traffic into one area is what it functions to do. So like if you're wanting to have grain delivered, they could be on it to get to the grain company, but they wouldn't be allowed to go further north than that. So you could draw the line, basically, anything north of the grain shop or, or just opt out the grain shops allowed to be on it for the purpose of coming and going.
I think all of the exceptions we're talking about, all would need use of North Main Street. Whether it be the elevators, the gas company, the Future X, I just don't want to, I'm thinking of those. The frustrating group is those that will not drive to 41 and down, they cut through and make this corner, which I don't know why you want to make this corner on a semi, but they do it quite regularly. That's the ones that are frustrating and there's delivery trucks headed in Terre Haute, Illinois somewhere.
I guess, I don't know what the northernmost business on Main Street is that we would be encompassing. I mean, there's a seed company that's further up there, I think, too.
Right, and that's Park Seed, that's the town.
Right, but then we're limiting anybody going to Park Seed also.
Right.
At least through Marshall, you know? So, I mean, the only thing we have the capacity to limit is within town limits, so, you know...
I'll see, or X come and go from the north. Maybe they're going to Crawfordsville or coming from Crawfordsville. They may come and go that way, so they've got 231 and cross 236. They probably want up to Hillsdale and stuff, I wonder.
So what I'd say is that...
Well, top of that way, if he's going to Park Seed or Lebanon.
What I'd recommend is that I'll blow up a map and then we can kind of coordinate which routes are available. That might be the best thing to do is if we have a map of the streets, then we might be able to get an idea of where we could limit versus not limit.
Which is just North Main Street and 236, really, and that's through their shut, because it's always going South Main.
Right, and we're not limiting 236 because that's...
Can't do that.
Yeah, and on the side streets.
But do they have alleyways or things like that available to them to get to their businesses?
Well, there's a limited amount of traffic on B Street and North Center Street just because of the elevator.
We could limit through traffic for non-localized businesses, I guess, meaning if you're, you're one of the businesses within town limits of Marshall, you're allowed to have that type of traffic. But we're not allowing out of town, you know, just because you're traveling from Florida to Wisconsin and you happen to wander through Marshall or whatever, you could limit it as non-local travel possibly. That's, that's what, there's another town in southern Indiana that did that, I can't remember. It's down by Clay City somewhere, they had it that way. But, so you could make it so your businesses are still friendly to be able to have their traffic come and go, they just limit other traffic.
I mean, definitely, in my opinion, we do not want to curtail the businesses and their needs, the town businesses especially, to stay here, but we've got to at least have some discussion there. It sounds like South Main and the side streets on the south part of town we can take care of.
We could opt out our in-town businesses, it'd be what I would say, and just make it so it's out of town travel.
You guys have any, any of that?
I mean, I agree with you. I mean, the south would kind of need to...
I mean, I agree with you, I mean, the south would kind of need to, I think it's signage, so that way they're aware with the south, move forward with that, and then we can look on the north and see, like you said.
Will they have to update a bridge or two on 450?
Supposedly no, I don't know.
Okay.
I, I'm not a weight limit, you know, size of the bridge. Randy Norman was present at the meeting, so I would assume if there were something like that, he would have said so.
Yeah.
He was asked directly at the meeting, and he didn't think it was going to be a problem, so. But I would say definitely, you know, the sign here saying, no, no, you know, weight limit such and such, or however we want to word that. Usually it's a weight limit, but they have the no, no truck traffic or no semi tra, I can't remember how they worded their signs, but I think the weight limit's a clearer way to word that.
Do the, does the county give exceptions to, and they're called through?
They do.
On contact.
I have the ordinance, so I can bring it to our next meeting.
I think that's probably where we should start.
It'd be a good template to operate off of, anyway, because then we're mirroring what's already being enforced in other sections of the county, so.
Then will the businesses, like the Amish businesses, tell their drivers they can't go that route anymore, so their routes change?
Right, so what I think they're intending to do is send letters to the local businesses indicating that this is the route that we're desiring to be used, and that's something we could do also, we could provide the seed company, or, you know, the grain company, or, you know, the Future X, or whoever, this is our desired route for your drivers. And they certainly could pass it on to their vendors there, or their customers. That's probably a best practice, I would say. Because otherwise you're looking at policing it, and, you know.
Right.
How do you police it?
This is, right, okay. Well, I thought it was good news that they at least listened to us as commissioners and.
They directed to change the ordinance, and they've already voted on it, they're already.
Much appreciated.
Yeah.
Another piece of old business, I did get tornado sirens batteries replaced, I think they've been on order, and those batteries that I replaced were 2013 batteries, so that's, that's a very good lifespan of those batteries. You have a deal?
This is not covered yet.
I don't want that.
Kitty and I talked about that today, it's a service agreement on that thing, on that siren thing.
I don't, I don't think it takes care of that. I got a call from the county, not from county, but from emergency management, stating that our batteries need replaced.
So what does this do?
That may, or some call.
Or is this something I've always been told I had to pay on that siren thing?
Is that 500?
Uh?
Is that initially 500?
Yeah.
That insurance against loss, maybe, like if it was a break or be damaged?
It says, maintenance and repair contract. Annual siren maintenance contract covering the period of October through September 31, maintenance repair contract.
Well, the batteries failed this past Wednesday.
I thought that was weird.
Very short.
Yes, and I had the batteries on order for a couple of weeks, and they came in, and so I went ahead and got those installed today.
Are those a special, are those a depot battery, or just?
They're deep time batteries.
For the, for that application?
I don't know what all applications is used for, it was a specific battery they ordered. Yeah, they're, they're very expensive batteries, that total was, it was $1,036 for those four large batteries. But I just wanted to alert you that it should be up there, should be careful. Anything else under old business?
We need to pass for the, for you to be able to sign the house selling.
The closing for the 36 North Main. In order to have the town sell it, the authority has to be given to one person to sign the closing contract and everything.
And that's scheduled for?
It's tomorrow, well, your signature's tomorrow sometime at 1:00 or something, I think, right? But then they're going to come and sign on Friday, I guess, is what I last heard. But this would give Kevin the authority to sign on behalf of the town, and he can't vote on it since it's given him authority, so you guys would have to be unanimous on it.
Okay.
Along with that, it has always been our intention to do something about the drainage. Your thoughts on that, as that gets turned over to a new property owner, we still want to drain that area. A little of it is on this property, but almost all of it is on the town property.
So, I mean, we're, we're only allowed legally to do things to our property unless they give us written consent to do something on their property.
Okay.
So if we can solve the problem by not going on their property, that'd probably be the easiest route. If it becomes necessary to be on their property, I guess that would be up to whoever's doing the drainage for us, then we just want a written authorization from them, and I can do that if they need to.
Okay.
But if we can do it on our property, then we don't need that. I assume they would be interested in that, because they're probably going to want the property drained as much as we do.
I would think so, that has been our intent all along, to do that, and as I said, there's, it's not a great deal of work on their property, doesn't approach on very far at all, if at all, but we would like to.
So I guess that'd be something that I'd want to hear from the contractor on, and if the property is okay with us, I could just draft up a whole harmless agreement allowing us to do that. But once we sell it, we don't have the authority to do it without their blessing, so.
Right, right. So this resolution that I put before you is a resolution authorizing the county president to sign for the sale of the property, 36 South Main Street, would be Resolution 2021-2?
Yep.
And I think you've looked at this and.
If you look that up and make a motion, we can proceed to appoint you to sign.
Second it.
Okay. I ask, who said I would be abstaining on this? I'll put it to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose?
And I can get that abstract tied on the morning if you want me to.
Okay.
I'll walk right by there.
You sent probably that, you sent the other one.
I will.
Under new business, I have also mowing contract.
Okay, he presented, he as in PNB, who's done it the last few years, three years, two years, $155. And he originally, last year started at $135, and then we added the property on South Main here, we're going to start mowing, so he upped it to 150. And I told him that probably, we wouldn't have that part, but we would have the back part, and he said he ran into some extra fees last year on spraying, they come up and things, so that's why he went for 155.
Yeah, I did ask him a couple times, and I think he relayed that to him on some spraying.
I'd give him some.
From my knowledge, he did.
I'd give him some leeway, because fuel's probably going to be there.
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering, thinking, gas prices are going up.
And I would like, and I did talk to him last fall about spraying that waterway that goes to the bottom of the park, because it's got a lot of thistle and all coming up in and out, to go ahead and spray that, and so he agreed it needed to be sprayed, and he would, he would do that, so I don't know if that's a part of what he's.
He just put mowing, we can remove the clippings from walkways and parking lot and loose sticks and the breeze.
Okay, so that may be an additional cost, but we've got to do that, get that under control.
And it's the waterway?
Yeah, the waterway, that will be northeast corner of the park property.
I made a change on the 2021-1, February is the date, I changed it to March, so could you guys just initial next to the change? Time flies.
We have people sometimes don't know, day or even month.
It's okay, I just don't want her to get hung up with the stake on anything, that's why I want to, they may not have caught it, but you never know.
No sketch.
I earned my K for the year now, right?
Yeah. Is that debatable? Probably not.
You're the boss, tell me.
So, PNB Lawn and Landscape, mowing for 2021, a total of $155 per appearance, I'll take a motion on signing this.
I approve that we approved for PNB mowing.
Second. Who's that with? TB?
PNB Lawn. Good motion, and second to accept the bid from PNB Lawn and Landscape Maintenance for $155 per mowing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose? Does anyone on the board have anything under new business?
I don't.
Oh, I did have something to ask, a kind of, we need to remind Jeff about people parking on the sidewalks, because they're on Sunday.
Yes.
Went out for a walk, it was nice, and they were literally parked in the middle of the sidewalk, so you had to walk.
I have, I've mentioned that, you know, so he knows the people.
He knows.
Yes, and I know he's addressed it on somewhere.
Okay. Doesn't know it's muddy and people are.
Well, the sidewalks aren't meant to support that type of weight either, and with them being new, you know?
He said something, I think he even three times this day, I saw him twice at our house.
What's that?
Wow.
Well, I did fail to mention, they did get the windows installed over to the town office building, if you could, or something like that.
Yeah, the one on this east side, they must have broke the windows, because I've got a bunch of loss today when I do trash out, there's been trash, but the others, they didn't have any, all the time.
First quarter, 9:30, Wolves.
Oh, I thought it was. See that mess water down there? It proved my heart to pay that.
I had a conversation with Brooklyn Hill during that time, that we really pumped a lot of water, and they said they noticed it.
rise on what you kind of like? Just adjust this myself a little.
Cute question.
Nice windows.
Yes, yeah. The ones they took out, I know were original to that building.
Oh, yeah.
Building, early 60s, maybe?
1960.
Yeah, so, they are nice windows, yes.
Was Dave, if you, was Dave doing that? Just the Amish outfit?
Midwest, I can see this.
Yeah, I think he'd be all right.
Yeah.
Our claims were, for the town, $11,951.37, and for the water, $10,692.79.
What was the first number? Thank you.
Dave, what do you, anything else to add?
No, I'll work on the CARES resolution. Just refresh me, Kathy, you were wanting the funds to, were we wanting to create a CARES fund, or do we have one, and we're wanting to be able to transfer from CARES to the general fund?
We did have one, I created one already.
Okay.
Because I got the money in January.
All right.
So I created the Carpe Care Fund.
And we're wanting to transfer from the CARES fund to the general fund? Okay, yeah, I already have one of those, I just need to change out a couple things, I just wanted to make sure I remembered correctly.
Yeah, yeah.
Tom, just might hear the fix it made there, so. So are we, yeah. That was very aggravating, because it never surfaced, and in all that cold weather and snow, you would have thought we would have had a melted spot or a soft spot with, you know, with the kind of galley's we were leaking, but it never did surface. And we found out that it was leaking there under Main Street, but going straight to the ditch on West Side.
Okay.
And they discovered that when they opened up, we do ask about, down at Walnut Street, that big 36-inch tile, they opened that up, and they could sound like a, just a river roaring through, I mean, it was on the other side of the street, but that was how much water was going through there. So it, they had to chase it down, it was one of those, we probably would have never found it, but the way it was falling, yeah. That company did really good, they found it in just a matter of minutes, almost.
Oh, really?
Yes, it was very quick.
And she guys knew there was a lot of water going in this drain over here, we're just going to figure out why Tom Gray was draining some of the basement.
Well, that was, you could hear a pump engage occasionally, it was running pretty constant.
And that's what we had Mark check at the restaurant.
I don't know, was that getting in Tom's?
Yes.
It was Tom's basement, but then he told me that.
Was he unaware of it? Oh, he wasn't aware of it?
No, Mark told me that, but he said it drained, so I thought, well, it's a basement okay.
Well, I had talked to Tom about that, and he said his son's run almost constantly.
Oh, yeah.
And so after they were here and fixed that, he texted me the next day, he said, they fixed it because his son doesn't run hard at all now.
All that together.
Yeah. So it was backing going the other way somehow, and I know there's a drain.
It might have been following a water line into the basement.
It could, you're right.
I mean, there are occasions when they.
I know there's a basement drain in there, where it hooks up, it could have been back, back flowing in that basement, too.
Yeah.
And is there a drain right there beside walking out this drain? There's, I mean, coming out of the yard right there, like through your alley, there's a hole.
That's the one he was pumping into.
Oh, I thought it was pumping right there.
Well, it's the same drain.
Oh, okay.
It's just got.
Yeah, he moved it down here.
Oh, okay.
In there, Tom?
We got the year-end financial records all done and submitted, got those done Friday, and everything worked fine, I just had a couple adjustments I had to make with it, I had it wrong count by accident. So I just need you guys to re-sign on the year-end here, that's where we ended up.
Just in the year?
Yeah, the totals didn't change on anything, it was just I had to adjust from general to MTH, vice versa. Everything looked good for the year, so. So since I got that put behind me, then I can balance it, so there's January's water.
Water.
Water. Compared to there's February's.
Did you get Overpacks bill?
No. Mark, I've talked to Ronnie because he sent me the bill for his work. Then I got a bill from Nutella Supply for $12,000. And I asked him how much of that was Overpack's part and how much was our part. So he's going through that bill so that I'll know how much to actually bill Overpacks. So I'm waiting on him to get back. I don't have the money for Nutella Supply or Ronnie.
So these are the same?
Uh, one's January, one that I had to pay for.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So I got it done. That's my statement. These statements online, you can get them or mail them.
Oh, Kathy, I did read some. I forwarded you a copy of Ron Wheeler's closing statement. Did you get it today? Sometime this afternoon?
I bet. I probably got off because I got busy on the water bills this afternoon, so I had to look back.
Let me know if you don't see it. But he emailed it to me and I just forwarded it on you as did the realtor.
I think it was probably about 1:30 because the last time I looked.
It might have been after that, yeah.
I got busy on the water bills.
My day just kind of...
Because I got all this stuff all done.
Blurs together. But if you don't have it, let me know. It's on my email, so...
This is the last year on the basement.
Let's see, I had to put that round in. And it...
He did it since I've been here. I think I've been here two years, right?
And here's the water bills because we've done some of them here. It's probably not happening bad.
I think it's firm, it's going to be, did put a shut on.
She brought that up to me and I didn't even ask her. And then that's how I knew that. So I'm waiting to see if they... Which I didn't show anything out there, we're very, I mean, so she spotted it very quickly. And then I did do the water bills today and for the most part, everything's fairly good standing. We got a few, everything red, but one, two, three, four. And Larry's was one of them and it was just a one-time fluke thing. So, but he's got a new meter, so it may have just been water or ice or something.
Well, you can shut that one off.
So, but...
Did the new meter fail? Or is that...
It just didn't read today, so... But somehow they, they'll just go to sleep or something and it'll read next time. But I probably, I'll just wait and see.
How long have I had the new meter? I couldn't know that.
Yeah. Last summer, last year. I figured we'll put that in.
I don't know.
But there's nothing like it used to be. We had 12 more not reading. And our accounts aren't too bad.
So after the leak has been fixed, we're probably in that neighborhood of 27, 28 or... Which is good.
Like I said, I want to find out and have Decap and down there to justify the season half from today or from where. Try to pray today is a better... We've had two people move out of town, so we've got two empty houses, so...
It looks like we got a new one over here. Want to buy that one?
Oh, we got to do by that. Well, I guess, and they're going to keep water on, repeat this house for now. They have, they have people here with the water shut off. Yeah, that's why I'm like, Jake, you're great. Yeah. I can go everywhere, home, see you all there. Everywhere I go, it's the same. I'm doing the same thing over and over.
We're going to talk about that. I get next week, we'll bring it up. Cleanup day. When I do.
I do have the new slides in storage over here for the park. We need to...
We'd love to.
Get a couple of extra hands to put those in.
We do it weekend and get Ted to do it. I can help, but I can't. Probably get Tyler to maybe. I could get the boys to help. They're pretty strong.
It's really, it's a pretty straightforward process because it just proves in the boundary brackets and that's...
Here's all your papers back. Yeah, just let me know. I can see if I can help or if... I guess I can look at the weather and then let you know to see if it's feasible.
Anyone else have anything to put forward? You stand adjourned? Thank you.